Congressman Harris for support for the Wintz Center?
Yep.
Okay.
And I'll second that. I presume we'll put this under county manager's report?
Okay. Here's our motion, second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay. All right. All right, next is the minutes. We've had a chance to take a look at the minutes of February 25th. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes, counsel? Okay, hearing none, that the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. The dispersments of March 18th and March 25th. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments, counsel? Okay, hearing none. The chair claims that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. All right, first up tonight is a presentation audit. Martha, you want to come on up? Of FY 23 and 24 audit.
There we go. All righty. There we go. Oh, that math is crazy. Good evening, counsel. Martha Sparks, Finance Director for Talbot County. And I have with us here our auditor, Christopher Lehman from SB and Company.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I was the engagement partner for this year's, or FY 2024's financial statement audit. And what I'll do is I'll go through a brief presentation that highlights the results of that audit. If you have any questions, please feel free to just let me know as we go through this. So this includes the scope of services that we were engaged to perform. We were engaged to perform an audit of the June 30, 2024 financial statements. For the county, it's also termed an ACFA, or Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That ACFA includes, in addition to the financial statements, an introductory section of the financial statements, as well as a statistical section in the back. That entire document makes it that term ACFA. That also does get submitted for the Government Finance Officers Association Award Program on an annual basis. We also completed what's termed the Uniform Guidance Single Audit, and that's a required audit for any government entity that expends more than $750,000 per year of federal funds. We also complete a state mandated audit of 911-related revenues and expenses. In addition, upon completion of the audit, the state requires a UFR or a Uniform Financial Report to be submitted to the state, just taking the financial statement numbers and putting it into a standard format for the state to do analysis on the county's numbers. And then lastly, related to the single audit, we also prepared what's termed the data collection form. That's required to be submitted with the single audit to the federal government, and that lets the federal government know that the county's met its requirements for the single audit. The results of the audit are that we've issued a clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements, and that would be the best opinion we could give under professional standards. And that says that the financial statements are reasonably free of material misstatement. We did not discover any instances of fraud. A financial statement audit, it is not a forensic audit, but we are required to have a healthy skepticism that fraud could be perpetrated at any time. We did note one material weakness in internal controls, which stemmed from the 2023 audit and the timeliness of bank reconciliations. Some of that did carry into the 2024 period. And management's currently implementing a three-part corrective action plan. And once that corrective action plan is completed, we would expect that finding to be clear. We also received the full cooperation of management, so any records that we requested, we obtained adequate support for those items. We got, we received timely responses to any of our questions. And then from a single audit perspective, we had no compliance findings to report in that audit. This slide here is just the picture of the audit process that we go through. I won't go through the details of every audit step here, but really the audit's designed to be similar to a funnel, how we funnel out risk. And the risk of the financial statements being misstated is really what we're auditing for, the correctness of the accounts and balances going into the proper accounts. And a large part of our testing is that second phase there, testing the design and operation of the internal controls. And in looking in the controls, we also consider the control environment. And there's five interrelated components that we look at. Three listed here to the left, we consider the overall control environment, management's risk assessment process, the specific control activities of the county, as well as the information and communication and the monitoring of those controls. And then we, here are the key processes that we evaluate, looking at treasury function, estimates within the financial statements, financial reporting, expenditures, as well as looking at payroll, revenue, fixed assets. And lastly, the information technology as it relates to the accounting system, and then from a single audit perspective as it relates to grant compliance. And we had noted, other than the item that we mentioned previously about the bank reconciliation issue, all these other, all these areas were both designed and operating effectively for the period under audit. Any questions so far? Okay. This is probably a little hard to read, but it is derived from the financial statements that were issued. This comes out of the Management Discussion and Analysis Section, which prefaces the financial statements. And that's where management discusses the balances and the reasons for the changes. And this is what's termed an entity-wide picture of the financial statements. This includes not only all the fund-level activity, the general fund, the proprietary funds, but it also includes capital assets, as well as long-term liabilities. So just at a high level here, if you look at governmental activities, the net position of the governmental activities increased from about $128 million in 2023 to an increase of $152 million in 2024. So that just shows that the financial condition has increased there, as well as there is an increase in the business-type activities of, from $45 million up to $49 million. So there's an increase in those activities as well. And then here, also taken from the Management Discussion and Analysis Section, it's just showing the year-over-year revenues, as well as the expenses for both the governmental and business-type activities. So just all in, the governmental activities had a positive change in net position of roughly $24 million for fiscal year 2024, while the business-type activities had an increase of roughly $4.2 million for fiscal year 2024. Last few slides, I hit on a number of these items as I went through the presentation, so I won't, I won't go through these in detail. But really, if we had, really any issues getting through the audit, I'd be required to bring that to your attention. If we had audit adjustments, I'd be required to bring that to your attention. We had no audit adjustments, so that does speak to the, to the quality of the numbers that we are getting, you know, from an audit perspective. As I mentioned before, we had not identified any fraud. Had we identified fraud, I'd be required to bring that to your attention. If we had disagreements with management on any accounting matters, which we had none, I'd be required to bring that to your attention. So nothing additional that I would need to bring to your attention through our audit process. And lastly, I'll open it up with questions, but I do have my contact information here. If there's any, you know, questions that you have outside of audit season, we do work with Martha and her team if there's questions outside of audit season. We, we want to be helpful when it's convenient for you all, and we don't want you to feel like you have to wait for us to be on-site or for us to be ready for the audit for you to ask questions. So Martha's not shy to, to ask questions, and that, you know, helps us provide better service that way as well.
We did see Chris's review of the reserve policies that council recently adopted in our administrative resolution, so he was part of the process, the review team, to look that over to make sure it was accurate.
Okay, okay. Any questions, counsel?
I, uh, no questions. Just one is a note of congratulations from Martha, because this is, this is your report card and your department's report card, and, and obviously you're, you're scoring, you're scoring very well. And, and that gives us confidence, further confidence. We have confidence, further confidence in, in the capabilities and activities of your department. So congratulations on that. And, and a thank you also, because what you don't see in this presentation is that when we got these binders with this audit information, Martha also provided us with, with a memo that guided us through to, to highlights. And, and I think, at least for me, as a non-finance person, it really helped me get a deeper appreciation for where the important numbers lie. And I, I want to, I want to thank you publicly for, for your guidance on that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other?
I'll second that motion.
Awesome job all around. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to add that we've really improved our accounting and reporting processes, particularly related to our grants, and we've made significant improvements in our grant reporting. And that has been the result of our Grants Clerk, Caitlin Fitzgerald, and our Assistant Finance Director, Caitlin Foster-Clark. They have really streamlined the processes, but the other important part are our departments. I can't tell you how important their part is in us having these successful records and reports. And they've been, MICA in the airport, the FAA grants are quite something to wrangle. And I just can't say enough about the good working relationship we have with our departments, and they're a big part of this as well.
Okay, and, and I want to say thanks to Martha. You, Caitlin, and your whole team made it really easy for us. And you've done a lot of work for us in this year's budget and last year's budget, especially this year. You've really stepped it up and really helped us work through and cut our time down a lot. So you've absorbed all, a lot of the time for us, and you've got the facts in front of us. And you've done a really, really good job this year with, with the whole budget format that you've done this year. And, and I want to commend the county manager, too, that you've done a great job, and your staff, too. Yep.
Thank you, President Callahan.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we don't, do we don't have to vote on anything, or? Yep, we're good. Okay, we're good.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next, Madam Secretary, introduction of administrative resolutions.
Do you want me to read the title?
Yeah, the title's fine. Title's fine.
Administrative Resolution Pickup Resolution for the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System of Talbot County, Maryland.
Uh huh. Okay.
Good evening.
Hey, Donna, could you pull your mic down a little bit so we can hear you and introduce yourself, please?
Oh, Donna Pardue, Director of Administrative Services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The law enforcement officers' pension system provides enhanced retirement, disability, and survivor benefits to participants and their families. There are 26 EMTs who will be eligible to participate in this system.
Okay.
So counsel, this is, this is an exciting night. This is a, this is a project that this council got behind to invest in our premier public safety employees. This kind of caps off the ability to put our Department of Emergency Services medical staff into the state public safety pension. And I know they're excited about it, and it's certainly going to aid in the retention of really quality individuals and help us recruit the same. So thank you.
Okay.
Well, I, I know that this, this change of, of the rollover of this, of this pension system is something that, that we see as a key tool for recruitment and retention in our public safety. And I'm thrilled that we're at the point where we can take this step forward for, for our correctional officers and for our, some of our emergency services workers. This is really important in being able to do for them in their recruitment and retention what we've already done for the sheriff's deputies.
Long time coming.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yep, yep, it's a good job. Thanks. Okay. All right, so we want to go ahead and make a motion.
So moved.
You, you want? Do you need a show of hands to introduce first?
I'm sorry.
So.
No, no, we can.
We introduce and then?
No, we, we can vote on it.
You introduce and then vote.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Introduced by counsel?
Okay.
And now, now I think you can just call the roll. You don't need a motion.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next, Madam Secretary.
Administrative Resolution Authorizing a Transfer of Emergency Medical Technicians Employed by Talbot County, Maryland to the Law Enforcement Officers Pension System.
Okay. Are you going to?
I, I think.
This, this is another step in the, this is another step in the same, the same goal.
Correct, correct.
So we want to show hands to.
Yep.
Introduce?
Yeah. I, I was, I was waiting for Clay. Okay, Clay, you want to comment on this?
So this is, this, this just seals the last vote. Just, just make sure we put the EMTs into the LEOPS program.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Yep, okay. All right, raise hands.
Sponsored by counsel?
Uh huh.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay.
And lastly, we have Administrative Resolution Authorizing a Transfer of Local Detention Center Officers of Talbot County to the Correctional Officers Pension System.
The Correctional Officers Retirement System also provides enhanced retirement, disability, and survivor benefits to participants and their families. There are 40, approximately 40 corrections officers who will be eligible to participate. And if I may, I'd like to thank county council, the county manager, and the assistant county manager for all of their support throughout this process. It's been a long one, but very much worth it for our employees.
Okay.
And I agree with Donna. This is a long time coming. This has been an interesting road. Just as a reminder, three years ago, council requested that our local delegation introduce a bill in Annapolis, which was enabling legislation to allow for the correctional officers to enter the correctional officers' retirement program course. And at that point, the bill passed, so the legislation was in place. And then that triggered a one-year waiting period. And the one-year wait, waiting period has, has lapsed, and now they're eligible once you pass this resolution. So a long time coming, dedicated employees with our corrections department, and they're looking forward to your action this evening. And it will help us significantly with regard to retention of quality individuals and recruitment of others.
Okay, good job, Mr. Stamp. Okay, raise your hands.
Sponsored by counsel?
Okay.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay, good job.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, counsel.
Yep, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Madam Secretary, it's a discussion on General Assembly legislation.
It is Senate Bill 931 and House Bill 1036, Renewable Energy Certainty Act, Public Utilities, Generations, Generating Stations, Generation, and Siting. Opposition.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll speak to this one. This is, the, the state is, is certainly looking to reach its renewable energy goals by citing solar energy generating, utility-scale solar energy generating facilities. And they're particularly looking to eastern shore farmland to be able to do that. And some of that is happening. We've seen evidence of that happening up on, along Route 50, along Route 404. There's more coming up in Cordova, up in the Chapel District part of the county. This county, this council passed legislation a couple of years ago to guide how that is to be done, that we want to make sure that our best farmland is reserved for growing food, and that perhaps the more marginal land can be turned into solar generating. This state legislation, however, would, would trample over that local legislation and over our local zoning, and preempt, preempt local zoning laws in the placement of these, which, which counties have joined together. And aside from being a bad president, this is, this is really not something that can be easily reversed. Local decision-making should play a role. Yes, state encouragement for this, but local decision-making properly should play a role in this. And we are joining with other counties. Our Maryland Association of Counties, Mako, has been lobbying against this, and I think it is well and proper that Talbot County should lend our voice in opposition to this, this legislation.
Okay, any other?
I just want to make one comment.
Yep, yep.
I would recommend, I, I agree with Mr. Lesher. I would recommend the book Confessions of a Greenpeace Dropout. And there's a section in there that talks about the effectiveness and of solar, and is very critical of it. So you take somebody who was on the vanguard of environmental protection, turning on something. I think that the position we're taking is consistent with some of the changes in views.
Okay. Mr. Stepp, good?
Yeah, I see it as typical state overreach, and we need to listen to the counties and where we stand on it, so.
Okay. All right.
I, I will move to issue the letter of opposition.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, we got a motion, a second.
Is that a motion, a second for both, both letters?
For both letters.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda?
So, so to be clear, that was, that was in opposition to Senate Bill 931, as well as House Bill 1036. They're, they're linked. It's essentially cross-filed legislation, same pieces of legislation.
Okay, next on the agenda? Clay, stuff?
So, county manager report, you're going to get tired of hearing from me tonight. It's kind of lengthy, so bear with me. So first, we'll talk about board and committee appointments. The first would be requesting council's consideration to appoint Mr. Joseph Nordike to the Board of Electrical Examiners.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
And next is referring to the Talbot 250 Commission, which has been enacted by the county council recently by resolution, proposing a number of names for appointment to this commission for your consideration. The first is Mr. Charlie Powers, representing Tillman. Ms. Cindy Orban, representing Easton. Ms. Emma Poole, representing the Talbot County Free Library. Jalen Hicks, representing Oxford. Jerry Seiler, representing Daughters of American Revolution. Jill Ferris, Chesapeake Bay Maritime Museum. Ms. Joan Levy, Talbot Arts. Mary Eileen Russell, unincorporated, unincorporated area of the county. Richard Skinner, St. Michael's. Dr. Sharon Papakai, Talbot County Public Schools. Stacy Radcliffe, Easton. Wesley Haygood. And administrative positions would be Pete Lesher, council liaison. Sarah Kilman, County, and Kristen Goller, who works with Cassandra with Economic Development Tourism. Requesting council's consideration for approval of these individuals. Oh, I'm sorry, in one addition, Jalen Moni as well.
I move for the appointments.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. You want me to slow down, don't you? I'm good? Okay. All right. The first thing I have is an announcement, and I'll go into a number of other items. Talbot County Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board, there are three vacancies, one full member and two alternate members. The county is seeking individuals to serve on this county property tax assessment appeals board. Should you be interested in serving, additional information can be found on the county website or by calling the county manager's office at 410-770-8010. So that's an announcement. Anyone that wants to volunteer or put your name in, please do. The next item I have is.
Mr. Stamp, can I reinforce that?
Sure, please.
This Property Tax Appeals Assessment Board, you've all received, or many of you have received your reassessments this year, people have a right to challenge that. And we need to have a board in place to do that. And so we're looking, and all we need, all we need is reasonable people. There's no special expertise required for this. You know how much your house is worth. You know how much your neighbor's house, house recently sold for. You just need a reasonable person on this board to be able to, to assess appeals for the fairness of this process. Help us out. Step up.
Thank you. That was good. The next item we have is, we, we have Captain Tom and Judy Bixler here this evening, and they have brought James Andrew along, the new owner of the Oxford Bellevue Ferry. So as you read in your agenda packet, they would like to come forward, maybe, with the council president. As you read in your agenda packet, the Oxford Bellevue Ferry has recently been sold, and we are seeking county council approval to assign the lease to Jetty Light LLC. And Tom and Judy and Patrick can certainly weigh in on this action. Welcome.
Thanks, Clay. We really want to thank the council for all your many years of support for us. This is bittersweet in its own way. We're very excited. We're proud to introduce Jim Andrews to you. He's very more than qualified to take over for us. And for us, it's a passage of our legacy, and he will continue to continue with the ferry in its iconic state, and that's what we're really excited about. So we're very happy to have him here, and we're looking for you to reassign the lease over in Bellevue so that he can continue to run the ferry. We're not leaving town. You're still going to be able to pick on us. We are just going to help out on occasion. We just don't want it 24/7 anymore. And it's time for us to spend time with our family and to be retired, if that's possible.
Yep.
I'm not sure Tom can do that.
I'll bet you they're going to travel a little bit.
That's our hope.
More than three-quarters of a mile back.
We put in a lot of miles in 24 years. Just not going very far.
Yep. Yep.
And I, I, I definitely want to echo what she said.
Yep.
We have received nothing but the best of cooperation from every person. I mean, if it's the man that's doing a repair, all the way to the highest level of government and the individuals in between, we really appreciate it. Just made it enjoy.
Yep. Well, welcome.
Well, thank you very much, members of the council. Um, my name is Captain Jim Andrews. Um, and I'm so excited to be a part of the community now, to, uh, help, uh, carry on the legacy and, and preserve this vital piece of infrastructure for the county and for Maryland. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I want to thank the Bixlers for all they've done, uh, in maintaining this historic operation. And you've done a wonderful job and I'm glad that you're staying on and, um, look forward to, um, your working with us and, uh, providing the county with, uh, a gem. Thank you.
Tom and Judy, uh, you have been extraordinary stewards of this Talbot County treasure and perhaps the most important piece of your stewardship is ensuring a smooth transition, uh, to the next owner. Thank you for your patience in making sure that that happens in this way and Mr. Andrews, Captain Andrews, uh, welcome and we, we look forward to, uh, to your continued stewardship. Uh, we know how important this resource is to Talbot County, uh, and to, uh, and to, and to tourism as a tourism resource in this area. When I, when I started at the Maritime Museum 33 years ago, I had a colleague who commuted all year round across the ferry. That's no longer possible, uh, but, uh, I, I had another colleague who, after he left the museum, became a relief captain. And I recall him saying that, uh, running it in the winter was always a bit of a challenge. You didn't shut it down overnight because you wondered whether it might restart in the morning. And so, so the ferry ran, the ferry ran, uh, for, uh, extended periods through, through cold weather. Today, it is, it is really primarily a tourism resource and ever more important for that, for that role. Uh, we know that you are important partners and, uh, and thank you for stepping up to this role.
Sir, thank you.
It's my pleasure. Tom, I'll echo the thanks and, uh, you know, the, the patience too. I know this is, you know, this has been a, a multi-year process in trying to find the right, uh, you know, the right keeper of the ferry now, so.
That was our goal.
Absolutely. So.
And we feel, we feel confident that we've found a great guy.
That's everything that I hear. So, Captain Jim, welcome, welcome to, uh, you know, your, uh, your part now in Talbot County in national history, so, uh, welcome. Uh, looking forward to, uh, to having you and looking forward to keeping this tradition alive. So, thank you guys very much and Captains Tom and Judy, thank you guys for, for all you've done over these many years. Thanks for employing my dad part-time and, you know, and, uh, you know, just, uh, yeah, everything. Glad you guys aren't going far.
It's been an honor.
Amen. Thank you.
Like my colleague said, thanks a lot, Tom and Judy, for, for so many years, you know. You're a part, you're, you're sort of a, a fixture of Talbot County. You know, you really, really are and we've thought, thank you so much. And Captain Jim, you know, you, uh, you got a, you got a lot of boots to fill on this one here.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean, so, but, uh, the county's here to help you. Anything you need, we're behind you and we just thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
We'll be holding a blessing of the ferry on April 4th and we'd like you all to be able to attend. It's a fun evening. Um, it's for everyone to get to meet Jim and to get to be on the ferry. The ferry doesn't leave the dock, uh, just so that you can come and go and be there. Um, it has to be a BYO because we can't provide anything, but it's, it's a great opportunity and it's a lot of fun. We'd love to have you all, uh, come. I know I sent invitations, but, uh, we really would-
Thank you.
Be happy to have you. And they start on the 5th.
Okay. So, we need a, a motion.
I'll, I'll move that we promulgate the assignment of lease.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Counsel, the next item I have is, uh, the pleasure of introducing Jeff Harrison and Jeannie Haddaway and I believe Emily is here as well. I'm not sure whether Cassandra is here or not. Um, if you all want to come up, thank you. Uh, they're here this evening, council, um, seeking a letter of support for their grant application to the Maryland Heritage Area Program, funding, uh, for funding to install some signage. I'm gonna just leave it to them at that point and, uh, I'll answer any other questions that I might-
Okay. Well, welcome.
Uh, Mr. President and, uh, other, uh, council members.
Yeah.
Thank you. My name's Jeff Harrison. I'm the president of Talbot Waterman Association. Our, um, this, uh, heritage sign really started about three years ago. There was a sign down Dogwood Harbor, um, that reflected the, it was the last, one of the last, uh, uh, harbors that had skipjack in, uh, sailing fleet. And it was in disrepair, but it was a, actually an original piece of art. Uh, it was a hand-painted sign and it had come in disrepair and, and I was asked, you know, maybe I could talk to the council or somebody to see if we could do something about it. Uh, I was also a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And I did that and it really didn't go a whole lot until I ran into Cassandra and I'm gonna thank her so much. She was the person I was looking for and she said, "Yes, we can help." And it kinda spurred this, you know, sign. We had a, a, a meeting, uh, at our monthly meetings and we said, "Well, why can't we do this at other, uh, parks or other harbors?" And we started there with that. And currently, uh, the sign down Dogwood is, uh, finished and it was a local artist that painted it. Uh, it was, uh, transferred into vinyl somehow, whatever they do now, and, uh, it has like a 30-year, uh, warranty on it. Uh, these other signs will be similar. There'll be a, a artist's painting. And we currently are working on, uh, the one down at Nebbit. Uh, they are heritage signs. They reflect the, uh, watermen's, um, participation in these harbors and when I say that, I also want to thank the council for, uh, a lot of these local harbors are, uh, uh, have a lot of watermen in them and this council and past councils have allowed that so that watermen have the first chance of getting, uh, a slip there. Uh, but we also want to go further and so, we decided that we were gonna try to apply for a grant, uh, to help pay for some of the costs. And, uh, we want to do, the next two would be Bellevue and Oak Creek, which would be maybe in the coming year. So, we're asking for a request, uh, of a letter of support and I'm gonna pass it to Jeannie 'cause she knows all the details about the, uh, the grant that we're applying for.
Well, thank you, County Manager Stamp and good evening, members of the council. For the record, Jeannie Haddaway-Rickio, um, on behalf of Talbot Waterman Association. Um, the grant is Maryland Heritage Areas Authority Non-Capital Grant. Um, the request is for $30,000, which will cover both the wayfinding signage but also interpretive panels at the three, um, public landings. We know that Talbot County has a lot of shoreline, but water access is still really in high demand, so we see this as a way to honor Talbot County's heritage with a captive audience that's already using the public landings. Um, these projects would be coordinated with Talbot County Economic Development and Tourism as well as Talbot County Parks and Recreation, just to ensure that we're in step with the county on the location and the specifications of, of the panels and the signage.
That's great. Okay. Let me discuss some questions.
I'm gonna thank you for your ideas and efforts, um, in preserving our precious heritage, which are the watermen. Thank you.
This is really important to, to do. Uh, this is an important part, like the ferry, of our tourism infrastructure. I know that you and other watermen are making your living there, but it, it is also an attraction for visitors from elsewhere. I, I, my mother tells a story about how she brought guests from the south coast of England and introduced them to a skipjack captain down at Dogwood Har- Harbor, a gentleman who's no longer, uh, with us. And carried on a conversation with him for 15 or 20 minutes, lots of great information. And as they were departing, her guests from Britain said, "How could you understand a word he said?" You probably know who I'm talking about now. Had the signs been there, she might've, her guest might've gotten more out of this. This is, this is so important. Um, I, I will, I will vote, uh, to support this, uh, for this letter of support. I do sit on the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority, but because this is for Talbot County Parks and Rec, unfortunately, I will have to recuse myself when it gets up to the state level.
Mr. Step?
Jeff, Jeannie, you guys are always there. Thanks for doing what you're doing.
Yep, thank you. Thank you guys for coming and all that. So, Madam Secretary, do we have a-
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll move for the letter of support.
Okay. Second. Okay, we got a motion, second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you guys. Thanks for coming.
Just as a note, I'm not sure we've ever seen Jeff without a hat on.
I always take my hat off when I come in here.
Maybe we just see you outside.
I don't know, I just want my hair out. I was going to get a cut. Something happened. I got seven grand killed.
Okay. All right, thank you guys.
Counsel, the next item we have, I'll call Marilyn Neal forward, the direct, Executive Director, Neighborhood Service Center. And, uh, this is a request for your consideration to provide $16,500 in contingency funds from the county for security and fire monitoring equipment upgrades. The finance director has certified sufficient funds are available. Marilyn is here to answer any questions or explain further. Good evening, Marilyn.
Um, I'll answer any questions and thank you for allowing me to come and for your consideration in this project that we're doing.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
I, I, I think I asked that this, this, we, we saw your request as part of our, our, our budget request for next fiscal year, starting July 1st. And, and I urged us to, to move forward more quickly on it, so, uh, hence, hence, uh, its presence in the agenda night, tonight. Uh, we know how important this is. We know how important the agency is and all that it does for us and, uh, we want to make sure that, that it gets this form of support.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Dave?
No. No comments? Thank you.
And I just want to say that, um, obviously, I'm the chair.
Yes.
And, um, you're doing such a great job and I really appreciate all you've done, Marilyn, to bring this to our attention. And we're, we're in communications all the time, so, this is definitely needed for, for your building and everything, so, um, I'm glad to help out. I'm glad to help you chair and, um, move this forward, so, being that said, Madam Secretary?
Well, I'll, I'll move, I'll move that, uh, we, uh, utilize contingency funds, uh, for this, uh, this project as requested by Neighborhood Service Center.
Second. Okay, we got a motion, second. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Marilyn. Appreciate it.
I would just like to thank the council for everything you do for NSC and the community because without you, we couldn't fill so many gaps.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Okay. Okay, the next, uh, item we have, uh, ask Carrie Adi and Rachel Smith, anyone coming forward? And, uh-
Jenna Markey. Jenna and Stan.
Oh, Jenna, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Rachel wasn't able to be here today, so.
Okay, that's great. Um, so, they're here this evening, uh, council, to raise their concern about some things that are happening that could impact the senior program, so.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Carrie Adi, I'm the program manager for, um, Senior Services Program at the Talbot He- County Health Department, um, which includes our senior care program and-
I'm Jenna Markey. I'm the owner of Home Instead and I'm the vice chairman of the Commission on Aging.
So, um, basically, we're here tonight to ask for your support for our senior care program. Um, and I want to start off by thanking you for having us here tonight. I know you're all familiar with our senior care program. I usually come in the fall to give you all the details about it. And then, I wanted to thank also the, all the people that came out to support our program tonight. Um, we have people from Upper Shore Aging, um, Delmarva Community Services, uh, all our senior services staff at the Health Department is out here to support us. Um, Dr. Fomey, our health officer, is back there somewhere. Um, and then, um, Commission on Aging members. Um, so, really appreciate everybody coming out for us tonight. Um, the reason we're here is a few weeks ago, we were notified about a proposal in state legislation, um, to cut the funding for our senior care program, um, this year, here in fiscal year 25, um, which, uh, kinda came out of left field for us. And then, the Department of Aging was able to decide how the cuts would be allocated to each of the jurisdictions and that resulted in Talbot County, um, potentially receiving a cut of 14.9% or $24,000 to our budget this year. Um, since we're already pretty much spent through quarter three, that would be really drastic cuts in quarter four of this year. Basically, um, we'd have to cut off almost all of our services to our seniors in the last quarter of this year if these cuts were to go through. Um, Jenna and Rachel Smith, the chairperson for Commission on Aging, wrote a beautiful letter to, um, the Secretary of Aging and the Governor's Office-
Yep.
-just stating what effects these cuts we're going to have on our seniors here in Talbot County. Um, they received a response from Secretary Rock yesterday. Um, and the, the good news in it is that the House has voted or has pushed forward a potential, not $2.5 million cut across the state, but lowering it to $900,000 across the state. So, that still has to pass, um, over to the senate to vote on, but we're a little bit hopeful now that the cuts won't be as drastic as initially proposed. Um, we still don't know i- if they, if that $900,000 cut goes through to the state, what portion of that would go to Talbot County. Um, so, we're still asking for your support, um, as we're just not sure what that cut's going to mean to us, whether, um, you know, they would cut us at all. Our hope would be that they'd leave a small county maybe alone in those cuts, um, but we don't know. So, um, you know what a vibrant senior care program we have here in Talbot County. Um, last year, we served, um, 207 unduplicated clients. Um, this year, we're already up to 214. So, people are needing us more now than ever, just, uh, with the expense of everything these days, food, utilities, rent. Um, people are really being hit hard, so they really need our services more now than ever. Um, and our county, we, aside from the big five counties across the bridge, PG, Montgomery, Baltimore City, Baltimore County and Anne Rundle County, we, we're the next in line for the most number of clients that we serve. Little Talbot County serves, um, a lot of clients with a lot less money. Those, those big counties get upwards of a million to $2 million to run their programs Little Talbot County serves a lot of clients with a lot less money. Those big counties get upwards of a million to two million dollars to run their programs, and we get just a hundred sixty thousand from the state, and then, of course, the funds that the county provides too. So we really, we have a great program, we serve a lot of people. The last thing I would want to see happen is us have to cut important services to people that could really lead to bad outcomes. You know, someone living alone that has a fall and doesn't have their emergency response system to get help and lays on the floor for hours, days, you know, that's a bad outcome. Someone who can't get their medications because they're too expensive that we help pay for, you know, that could potentially be a bad outcome. And somebody who can't maintain their personal hygiene because we're not out there helping them with their bath or providing them incontinence supplies could lead to bad outcomes with skin and health and whatnot. So that's really the last thing we want to see happen. So we're just asking for your support. We don't know what that is going to mean yet, because we don't know exactly what these cuts are going to be.
Carrie, obviously, undersells herself a bit with all the great work that they do. The numbers are super impressive with just the little bit of funds she has. So what we're asking for is that you guys authorize contingency funds to cover these cuts if they do come down. Again, there's a lot of uncertainty about what that number is. I think we're thinking twenty-four would be the top of that. We're hoping it would be substantially less. But we're hoping that you guys are willing to authorize some contingency funds so that all of the seniors in the Senior Care Program can continue to receive services this year.
And so the request for tonight is for the letter of support, but you're giving us that heads up that, once we know this number, you might be coming back to us with that further request for contingency funding.
Yes, so we did, you know, we did send our letter. We did send you guys one as well, making our, you know, position clear. We were, you know, encouraged to receive a response from the Governor quite promptly, or the Governor's Office. So we're hopeful nothing comes from it, but certainly want to make sure you guys are aware of the potential for the loss of those funds and a need to fill that, to continue the services.
Well, we know how important these services are. What you do to help our seniors age in place, which is best for them, which is typically most affordable for them as well. But they need these supports in place to be able to do that. And you provide them, but you need the funding to do this. We know that so many of the, these are not high pay scales. Working many of those, these folks working with our seniors. This is not a place to balance the state's budget. And as dire as the state's budget deficit situation is right now, this is, I think we recognize the wrong place to find those savings. So I'll move for that letter of support.
You have a second? Do you want to say something?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that I think it's disgraceful what this state has done in this regard, and find it to be really ageist. Of all the things that they could cut, they cut this for senior citizens. And the impact on our county, as you've pointed out, is significant because of our demographic and the high percentage. And you've done a fabulous job with providing services. And we also know that there are homeless, senior homeless issues that are going to have to be addressed. And how are they going to be addressed if they cut back our funding for what we're already providing? So it's a tragic situation, and I'm a hundred percent in support of what you're requesting that we send the letter. And hopefully, the state legislature will wake up and do the right thing by its senior citizens who've supported them all these years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to Lynn specifically, just because she's been such a great advocate for seniors as our representative on the Commission on Aging. She's extremely engaged with us, which is lovely and is really just an excellent advocate. So an extra special thanks to Lynn.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, all right, we got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Stepp.
Aye.
Mr. Lusher.
Aye.
Ms. Milky.
Aye.
Okay. You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay, counsel, your next item, I'll call Cheryl Lewis forward. You'll see in your packet, she's requesting a letter of support. The TRAP Volunteer Fire Company's request for an FY 2026 Community Project Funding for the construction of a replacement firehouse. And she'll fill in the details. Good evening, Cheryl.
Hi, it's nice to see everybody.
Nice to see you.
So it was about a year ago, we spoke with Congressman Harris, and he was willing to support us requesting federal funding to replace the firehouse. The firehouse was built in nineteen fifty-one with federal funding. It is no longer structurally sound for us to do any renovations to. We technically can't even fit equipment in it properly. As it is, we replace a lot of mirrors, and we have to custom build our fire trucks. So we need a new firehouse. We probably have the oldest in the county and getting very close to the oldest on the shore. We were successful last year, and you did support us last year. And up till a few weeks ago, we were a line item in the federal budget. So we are no longer that line item. Congressman Harris has reached out and said he intends to give full support for the project again in 2026. And I'm basically just visiting everyone and getting updated letters of support to those that, you know, need this support, to support this effort. It is, it was always a six million dollar project. I imagine it's probably more costly now, but we will make it work if we can get the funds from the federal government. The agreement with Congressman Harris was a seventy-five, twenty-five split, and our job is to raise the twenty-five percent. We have set aside about half of that now, so we are working very hard at getting there. And, you know, it's hard for a very small fire company in a very small community, but we are determined, and if we can get this money this year, we will get to work and we'll make it happen. So here asking for your support, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I do have a question. I recall when the issue of Lakeside came up, that there was a DERA, that the developer was going to provide some funding for a firehouse.
So any funding we've received from them, it has gone directly into that six hundred thousand dollars. So when we are receiving payments for the houses as they're built, we are putting that into that fund. We're not even putting...
Into the money to do the...
For the new firehouse, yeah.
Firehouse.
Absolutely. And we do, there is also a contingency that pays us a little bit annually forever, and that is the intent, because we're trying to get from A to B. We needed the firehouse, whether there was a development or not, but we're taking advantage of the funds.
And where is that documented?
The DRRA?
Well, the funding. They haven't come across with the funding, just to promise?
Oh, no, no, no. No, we've probably received three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's about half of the six hundred that we've set aside.
That's good. Good. Any other questions?
I will also make note, because I don't come here that often. So our small department does run five hundred calls a year, which is sort of substantial because of the unique as where we're located, and we serve a fairly large portion of Talbot County, and we go as far up as Queen Anne and all the way into Dorchester. So just kind of give you a heads up that we have a fairly busy, but small department.
You know, so understand that from the struggles you all have had, that it has burdened a lot of the neighboring volunteer companies like Oxford and Easton, so...
Yeah, no, we support five companies regularly.
Oh, yeah. I know.
Go ahead, Mr. Stan.
Well, I'd just like to add a thank you to TRAP Volunteer Fire Company for allowing us to keep a paramedic unit at their station as well. They've been gracious over the years and helpful to ensure that our crews have a decent place, and we work with them regularly.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, clearly, I would echo the concern about the state of the current firehouse, and they certainly need a new one built.
Okay.
I'll move for the letter of support for the Community Project Funding for the replacement firehouse.
Second. Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Stepp.
Aye.
Mr. Lusher.
Aye.
Ms. Milky.
Aye.
Very much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, the next item I have, I'll invite your Director of Parks and Recreation, Emily Gilmer Forward. Emily? And Brian, would you like to come up as well? Brian Harris? Emily was so excited to come see her all this evening.
Not nervous at all.
So the first item that she has is, and she'll fill in the details, she's asking counsel's consideration for the award of a bid number twenty-three zero three for portable sanitary chemical toilet service to Pearson's Comfort Group. And I'll let you fill in the blanks there.
Yeah, so we've been using Pearson for the past few years, no complaints. They seem to do a good service. If a porta potty blows over in the wind, they're out there to get it back up that day, so...
Emily, could you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, Emily Gilmer, Director of Parks and Recreation. And then this is Brian Harris, he is the Facilities Manager.
Thank you.
And so the bid is actually bid twenty-three zero three, in the sum not to exceed forty-six thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars. And this would be, I believe, extending the existing contract.
This is for, out to the community center and all the landings and everything, right? Got it.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions, counsel?
Nope. Nope.
Okay.
I'll move for the extension of contract.
Second.
All right. We got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Stepp.
Aye.
Mr. Lusher.
Aye.
Ms. Milky.
Aye.
And while Emily's here, the next item she has is counsel's consideration to award bid number twenty-four twenty-one Bellevue Harbor Pier redecking at five-five-three-six Bellevue Road, Royal Oak, Talbot County, Maryland. And I'll let her add some detail to that. I'll fill in where you need.
Yeah, so we will be, it's all grant covered. We will be doing the redecking of the Bellevue Pier, and then some of the Finger Piers as well there, and then the top rails that go down to the ferry.
And this would be bid twenty-four twenty-one to lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Disson in June LLC, in the sum of eighty-five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. There are total nine bids received. The project will be a hundred percent reimbursed by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, and they concur with the bid recommendation.
So this does include some work on the ferry dock, as well as on the waterman's public landing site?
They would just be on the left turn side. Then the railings are on the ferry that go down towards the ferry, yeah.
I'll move approval of bid twenty-four twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Stepp.
Aye.
Mr. Lusher.
Aye.
Ms. Milky.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. And finally, for Parks and Recreation, they're here to discuss with you or request your approval to install a new generator system at the Talbot County Community Center. This would also include a temporary generator. While that one's being installed, I'll fill in anything that you need me to cover. I'll hand it to you.
Yeah, the temporary generator, right now our generator is broken in the, it was put in in two thousand and five, and the parts are no longer available. So I had two contractors come out and verify that for me. So we have to get a temporary generator out there to, just in case, you know, it's starting to get warmer out right now. So if we lose power for more than five to six hours, we're going to be in trouble as far as melting down. So we have to have a temporary generator put in. And that's part of the package, along with the new one.
And counsel, so they received pricing for this effort, and they're asking your approval to award to Barnes Electric in the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for the new generator. Additionally, a temporary rental generator will be procured at a cost of nineteen thousand dollars for a ten-week period. There are sufficient funds in the Parks and Recreation FY twenty-five budget for this project.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Stepp.
Aye.
Mr. Lusher.
Aye.
Ms. Milky.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for hanging in there with me, counsel. We're moving right along here.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item I have, Brian Moore is not with us this evening, and he asked if I would bring this forward. This is an annual request for his road paving work. Just as a reminder, the Roads Department maintains a CIP project, capital improvement project, to address what we refer to as primary county roads. These are connector roads that have high traffic volumes, such as Black Dog Alley, Elm House Road, Glebe Road, Goldsboro Neck Airport roads. And so what he does is draws a blanket purchase order at the beginning of the year, and we piggyback off the state contract with David A. Bramble. We're here tonight asking for counsel's consideration to order a blanket purchase order for one point two million. We'll take them through the year. There are adequate funds in the CIP for this. We did our due diligence, checking the average cost to provide paving overlay two to three inches of about anywhere from sixty-five to a hundred and ten thousand dollars per mile. This bid comes in around eighty-five thousand per mile, so it's in line with the national average. And it would, it would, he will try to overlay about fourteen miles of the three hundred and seventy miles of county roads. And again, this would be directed at the primary roads that I talked about, connector, high-volume roads. And then subsequently, he'll be back to talk about doing tar and chip overlays on county secondary roads, and I'm going to make sure he's here to talk to you about that. So all that's to say, tonight I'm asking your consideration for approval of a contract with David A. Bramble, piggybacking off the state contract to cover fourteen miles of paved roads. And again, there are sufficient funds in the CIP project.
I will make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Stepp.
Aye.
Mr. Lusher.
Aye.
Ms. Milky.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. And now I will call for your county engineer, fresh off vacation, Mr. Ray Clark. And Ray is here this evening to talk about, or actually asks for permission to move forward in acquiring twenty Oranco septic tank of fluid pumps, and he will fill out detail on that, and I'll pick up anything that I need to.
Counsel, Ray Clark, county engineer. Then, this is actually a request to purchase twenty Oranco tanks. We had gone through a bid process with MDE to have these tanks selected. So these are a sole source that we were purchasing through, which was approved by MDE. We utilize these within the Resolution two thirty-five Sewer Service Area. We have up to about three hundred of these systems to be installed. And then after, probably towards the end of the year, we'll have Resolution two fifty, which will require about three, six hundred and ten. What we do here is we buy twenty, because we do get a discount for every ten that we buy. And then that, we then pass that discount on to the users that are basically securing the tank and reimbursing us once that tank has been installed. This is, again, part of the Bay Restoration Fund for, you know, this sewer system that we tend to receive, about, well, we receive twenty-five thousand dollars for property owners that make less than three hundred thousand dollars a year, and about twelve thousand five hundred for property owners that, this is grant funding, that make over three hundred thousand dollars a year. So we basically will be reimbursed for all this.
And again, just to echo Ray, this is for twenty Oranco step tank units at a cost of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And I think he answered your rest of your questions.
Yeah, okay. Any questions, counsel?
Good here. So moved. Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Stepp.
Aye.
Mr. Lusher.
Aye.
Ms. Milky.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Ray.
Thank you, counsel. And finally, counsel, we're requesting a letter of support be written from counsel to Congressman Harris for a grant to the Witsit Center for the Eastern Shore Youth Crisis Center proposal.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Stepp.
Aye.
Mr. Lusher.
Aye.
Ms. Milky.
Aye.
Okay.
And that completes your county manager report for this evening. Thank you, counsel, as always.
Okay, thank you, good job. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment, okay?
And we have one person who signed up in advance, and that is Mr. Phil Rigan.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Again, I told you before, my name is Phil Rigan, addresses two-nine-seven-three-six Sullivan Drive in the Easton. I listened to your respective comments earlier to this meeting, and it appears to me, and it's just my opinion, that you folks are dealing with a changing budgetary environment as you deliberate on your own budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And I know that you spent lots of hours already on that project, and you still have at least other, I don't know, six or eight to go, whatever that may be, in terms of hours committed to those deliberations. So congratulations to you for working through that process, and I wish you the best of luck as you evaluate the entire budgetary picture, particularly on the revenue side, in terms of what you may expect from other government entities. I do want to spend a couple of minutes to talk about Vietnam veterans. Last week, I'm sorry, last meeting two weeks ago, I'd intended to talk about this for a couple of minutes, but the entire meeting environment was overtaken by circumstances that I didn't feel comfortable with trying to say something about Vietnam veterans. I want to congratulate you again for inviting several Vietnam veterans to your March eleven meeting so they could describe the plans to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War on March thirty here in Easton. That celebration will begin with a ceremony just a hundred yards from here, on the front lawn of the courthouse, followed by a parade, which may, given the age of people in the Vietnam generation, could be a leisurely stroll along Washington Street, and then over to Glebe Road to the local VFW post. For those of us who grew up in the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties, I look around the room, and I realize there may be one other person, two other people who are in that group. For those who grew up during that period of time, the Vietnam War had a major impact on the lives of tens of millions of Americans. Thousands of my contemporaries learned how to protest in city streets and on college campuses by expressing their opposition to the war, which is perfectly fine, but I think in many cases, it was the first time they ever protested anything. And many of those protests occur, of course, were occurring at the same time as civil rights protests in major American cities across the country. In nineteen seventy, I was called to active duty, and ten months later, I was in Vietnam as a United States Army First Lieutenant. States Army First Lieutenant who had been assigned to the 23rd Infantry Division. During my time in Vietnam, I developed a profound respect for my fellow soldiers because they were true patriots, doing their very best under very trying conditions, just following orders, even though they knew their collective goal of achieving total victory would never be achieved. During my first two years after my discharge from military service, I found myself trying to answer a series of related questions. What would these Vietnam veterans, who are now Vietnam veterans, achieve in civilian life, the people I served with in Vietnam? Was there something I could do to make them successful? And where could I start? All those questions were answered by my decision in 1974 to join the National Staff of the American Legion in Washington, DC. I then embarked on a 35-year career as a veteran's advocate, working primarily with Congress to continually change federal laws for the purpose of improving educational assistance, job training, disability compensation, and health care for military veterans. For me, this was a labor of love, because I knew that each time there was a legislative change enacted, that would enhance the quality of life for literally hundreds of thousands of veterans and their families. The combination of improved benefits and services was truly life-changing. It enabled Vietnam veterans to overcome the effects of traumatic injuries in military service, and to then become productive citizens who did extraordinary things during their civilian careers. I can offer many examples of that, but I'm going to focus on just one. As I testified at congressional hearings many, many times, I was frequently joined at the witness table by double amputees who had refused to be sidelined by their disabilities. Instead, they had committed themselves to professional careers as advocates for veterans. And along the way, they presented themselves as examples of what was possible. As I conclude here tonight, I want to share my thoughts about one project that had a dramatic effect on how Americans perceived the Vietnam War. That project was the construction of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC on the west end of the National Mall. It was built in 1982. I was honored to be part of a group of 20 people who participated in a groundbreaking for that memorial on a very chilly day in late March of 1982. That memorial contains the names of 58,000 young Americans who died during their service in Vietnam. There have been estimates that that total, that total of 58,000 would probably be closer to 100,000, except for the highly effective medical evacuation system that was in place in Vietnam at that time, a system that was capable of moving a wounded soldier from the battlefield and getting him, getting him or her into a field hospital within 10 or 15 minutes. The Vietnam Veterans Memorial has been in place for more than 42 years now, but it continues to be an emotional experience for most of the 3 million people who still visit that site each year. Now, it's interesting, and I, that as I was walking in here tonight, I happened, I was in the front lawn of the courthouse, and I walked by the memorial that's already out there for Vietnam veterans. I noticed that there were 11, the names of 11 people on that memorial. I assume who were people who died in Vietnam who are from Talbot County. It was also interesting for me to note that the visual presentation next to those names was a soldier carrying a wounded comrade with a helicopter in the background. Precisely the medical evacuation system, symbolizing precisely the same evacuation system that I mentioned a few minutes earlier, was probably kept that number at 58,000 rather than over 100,000. So we come full circle. Again, I want to thank you for your, what you did to provide public information on the 30th anniversary, which is coming up, I'm sorry, the 50th anniversary, which is coming up on March 30. I plan to be there, and I plan to invite a bunch of friends, and we'll see who participates. But again, thank you for your support in that regard. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you. And I'll see you tomorrow night, Warner.
Yes, you will. I'd like to talk to you tomorrow morning if you don't have a chance.
Okay. All right then.
We'll talk about that later.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else like to come up? Okay. All right.
Counsel, comment.
I'll offer, I'll offer congratulations to Easton High School's ACE Mentors Program for their winning project design. This program, supported by local volunteers in architectural, construction, and engineering firms, guides teams from our various high schools, from Easton, from St. Michael's, and from St. Peter and Paul, as well as judges drawn from these same firms. And one of the volunteers in this program was from our own county engineering office. Want to thank all the community support for this, and again, congratulate Easton High School for their, for their winning project. And finally, my choice of a unusually loud tie this evening is no accident. And I, along those lines, I want to wish everybody, on this March 25, a Happy Maryland Day.
Right. Okay. Mr. Stepp?
I will, I will echo the Happy Maryland Day, but also add to that, we are exactly one month away from Talbot Day. So just want, Sarah, I just wanted to thank you for all your, all your work here, and all the county staff, and everything that everyone's doing to, to make that a continued celebration. So thank you for all that, and looking forward to it. Thanks.
Okay. Yep.
Well, our public speaker stole my thunder, because I was going to do an announcement to remind everybody to turn up on Sunday for the parade and the event at the VFW. 50 years, hard to believe.
Yep.
But it was quite, quite an experience for everyone.
Okay. I guess I just want to wish Keisha Haight, she's not here tonight, she's not feeling good tonight, and we want to wish her and her family good health, and hopefully she'll be up and running here in the next couple of days, so. Other than that, and I really want to thank staff, once again, and Martha back there. You put in some long nights, Martha, and staff, you know, to give us the information for the budget and stuff. And, you know, we keep saying this over and over, but you do do a phenomenal job, and we really appreciate it. I know it's tough sometimes to get us the information that we need, but, you know, at the end of the day, we're working very, very well together, and we really appreciate all the efforts you do and do for us to get us to the point where we can approve some of these budgets and stuff. So we really appreciate it.
Thank you for your support.
Mm-hmm.
There are many finance directors and finance offices and staff that are not as fortunate as us.
Yep. Yep, exactly so. Okay.
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 8, beginning at 5:00 PM. The council will be convening an open session at 3:30 PM, and then adjourning into closed session, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. On Thursday, March 27, at-
4:30.
4:30 PM, the council will be meeting for a fiscal year 26 budget work session. The meeting will be held here in the Bradley Meeting Room and is open to the public. On Monday, March 31, at 4:30 PM, the council will be holding a joint work session with the Easton Town Council and members from Easton Utilities to discuss a grant application to the Maryland, to the Economic Development Administration for the Regional Medical Center Project. The work session is open to the public and will be held at the Easton Town Council Chambers, 14 South Harrison Street in Easton. At 5:30 PM, the council will be meeting with the Board of Education. The meeting is open to the public and will be held at the Easton High School Culinary Arts Program at 723 Mecklenburg in Easton. On Tuesday, April 1, at 2:00 PM, the council will be meeting for a fiscal year 26 budget work session. The meeting will be held here in the Bradley Meeting Room and is open to the public. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene, as noted?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion, second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay, thanks a lot. Thank you. 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 Thank you.